Thank you. Will you all please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on the agenda tonight is comments by Mayor, and I would like to start with a resolution of sympathy for James Altonian and the family. Whereas on behalf of the City of Lake Forest, the City Council expresses its profound sadness at the passing of James Altonian at the age of eighty-seven on September twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four. And whereas Jim, together with Audrey, his wife of sixty-three years, raised four children in Lake Forest, Jennifer, Todd, Nicole, and James Altonian II, and was a proud grandfather of eleven. And whereas since he arrived in Lake Forest in nineteen sixty-three, Jim was strongly committed to Lake Forest, and his passion and love for the community grew deeper with each passing year. And whereas Jim willingly gave his time and talent to the community as Third Ward Alderman from nineteen seventy-nine to nineteen eighty-five, as a member of the Plan Commission, chairman of the Forest Park Beach Shoreline Restoration Project, on boards for both the hospital and Lake Forest Country Day School, and as a volunteer firefighter. And whereas Jim Altonian was generous, in nineteen eighty-two, he personally donated the dais at which it still sits today. Whereas Jim's fingerprints are found throughout the community. He had vision and took risks, always with the best long-term interest of the community in mind, and he achieved great success. His impact will endure for decades. Whereas Jim loved Lake Forest, the people and the places, and was often surrounded by family and friends who simply enjoyed being in his presence. Whereas Jim had a way of making people feel respected and valued, he inspired and made a positive difference in the community and in the lives of so many, and he will be long remembered for his accomplishments and contributions to the City of Lake Forest. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Lake Forest, in session October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, hereby expresses its deep regret and sincere sympathy to all the members of the Altonian family. Be it further resolved that this resolution be appropriately inscribed and conveyed to the Altonian family with a copy to be included in the official minutes of the October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. May I have a motion to approve the resolution of sympathy for James Altonian?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes, and we do express our deep sympathy to the family. At this time, I would like to ask Catherine Cerniak to approach the dais.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Mrs. Altonian and members of the Altonian family, it's my privilege to read a resolution prepared by the Chicago Bears in honor of Jim. Resolution of respect and loving memory of Jim Altonian. Whereas God has brought to a close the life of Jim Altonian, the staff and team of the Chicago Bears, with offices in Lake Forest, Illinois, feel it is befitting to express our sympathy to the family during this time of bereavement. You have our sincere prayers. Whereas he has served as a dedicated fan and supporter of the Chicago Bears franchise. Whereas he was part of the Chicago Bears franchise's long history with a presence that spanned over fifty years. Whereas he witnessed both our largest victories and our toughest losses. His dedication and commitment to the team was a testament to his love for the Chicago Bears, and the City of Lake Forest, and the sport of American football. Whereas he was one of our longest-standing fans dating back to nineteen seventy-four. Whereas during his time as a devoted fan, he saw at least twenty players earn their place in the Pro Football Hall of Fame, legends like Walter Payton, Dick Butkus, and Gail Sayers. Whereas in two thousand and sixteen, we had the privilege of honoring Jim on the field during our game against the Denver Broncos, a moment that reflected the admiration we have for him and acknowledging him as someone who truly embodies what it means to be a Chicago Bears fan. Whereas we are grateful for the many years he spent cheering for the Chicago Bears, whereas we hope that his legacy and love for the team continue to inspire those who knew him. Our thoughts are with Jim's family and friends during this difficult time. To the family, friends, and the community of Lake Forest, we share your sorrow and will always include him in our prayers. We recognize our losses are heaven's gain. Humbly submitted on this twenty-first day of October, two thousand and twenty-four, Chicago Bears, Halles Hall, nineteen twenty football drive, Lake Forest, Illinois.
Again, I would like to express the sympathies of the city and the City Council to the Altonian family. At this time, if you would like to leave, or you're free certainly to attend the rest of the meeting, but somehow I doubt it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on tonight's agenda is a discussion of the Forest Park Bluff stabilization and Forest Park Beach Pathway. As you all know, it's been a busy year at Forest Park with major progress on both the bluff stabilization and the beach pathway projects. A few weeks ago, we celebrated the completion, actually, one week ago, we celebrated the completion of the Forest Park Beach Pathway project with a beautiful ribbon-cutting ceremony. The project was made possible thanks to the incredible generosity of Lake Forest residents who donated nearly one million dollars in three months. Tonight, we're excited to share a time-lapse video highlighting activity at the Forest Park from August, two thousand and twenty-three through October, two thousand and twenty-four, showcasing the transformation of the bluff and pathway. These projects align with infrastructure and city facilities, a key focus of the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and thirty strategic plan. Both the bluff stabilization and the pathway projects represent significant improvements to our city's infrastructure, ensuring a lasting positive impact for our residents well into the future. At this time, I'd like to ask Director Thomas to... Do you want to watch this first? Okay. I believe we need a new sound system. The... Michael, now? Or is this it? You're not talking? Okay. Very good. All right, the next item on the agenda is comments by city manager.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and members of City Council. Good evening. Since he's not going to get up, I will take a moment just to extend my thanks and gratitude to the city staff on this project. This one, as you guys know, was a long road for us in many ways, but virtually every department was involved in this project, and I really lumped both the stabilization work and the boardwalk together from the initial financial planning, engineering, design work, fundraising campaign, to construction, landscaping. We just had so many employees who played a role in this project, and sometimes, to our detriment, we just quickly move on to the next project and don't always take an opportunity to celebrate our successes. But as someone who got to watch this project from start to finish, I think the pride that our staff take in these projects and making Lake Forest look beautiful with just exceptional and high-quality work is something we shouldn't take for granted. So I just want to make sure I have an opportunity to recognize staff, top to bottom, who played a role in that project, and I think the feedback from the community's been overwhelmingly positive. So, good job by everybody. All right, and we're giving this another try. Annie, thank you for your patience from a couple weeks ago. But tonight, for my community spotlight, I am thrilled to introduce Annie McAvini, the founder and executive director of Fill a Heart for Kids, one of the most successful nonprofits that we really have here in Lake Forest. And Fill a Heart for Kids, I've always been so impressed, not just for the incredible work that they've done to, you know, help and meaningfully improve the lives of disadvantaged youth throughout the region, but also to instill a sense of volunteerism amongst our own kids here in the Lake Forest community, and seeing how many of Lake Forest youth helped volunteer to put together a lot of the care packages and other things you do is very inspiring. So we're thrilled to have Annie here today to tell a little bit about her story, and with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you all for your generous time, and we are so fortunate to be in Lake Forest. And I have to share, it's going to be almost eighteen years, it'll be eighteen years in February, since we took in our first homeless child, and everybody in our community gathered around and helped him. Every child that's come into our home, the community has embraced. They've made all their school experiences so incredibly special, and I just can't thank you enough. Now, I know I have a slide presentation, so... Terrific. So, we sponsor four thousand children, and within eleven months, our programs increased and the number of, well, the number of children increased over thirty-three percent. We provide team-building experiences, toiletries for dignity, seasonal clothing, and tutoring to reduce peer shaming and increase school attendance. I just want to make sure I'm doing this right. You know, I want to take this back. See all these precious children here? We tutor them. And each one of these children was trafficked by their families, and now they live in a foster facility. And my dedicated team and our incredible community, and I'm talking about Lake Forest High School kids that tutor these precious children, and they have grown to just love them and be a wonderful part of our program. And it's so cute right here, because see these little pictures? They, of course, looked at the high school as old people, and so they made the Mother's Day pictures. So it was super cute. Here's just a few of our programs. So we have about, on average, between six and seven thousand volunteers a year. You'll see in the upper right-hand corner some of our employees folding clothes for children, and then we have Martin Luther King Day, and we have Project Elf. We have so many programs for children. And then you'll see that precious little girl holding a bag. We start as early as preschool tutoring and working with children. So we began Fill a Heart seventeen years ago when we first took in our baby, Michael, and he now attends Lake Forest High School, and he's doing wonderful. And twenty-seven children, you know, seventeen years later, we have been so fortunate to be in this community. And you can see over here, there's, it says that we sponsor over two hundred and thirty thousand pounds of food. We do weekend food bags for children that don't have access to food pantries to reduce children from committing crimes to eat, and we also work with children over the holidays, and it's very important over Thanksgiving break. That's a really scary time for children. You can't imagine what they go through and how many children that actually traffic themselves for food. So we work with teachers and social workers. We never do giveaways. Every child in our program, every care package that leaves our store is for a specific child. So we have We Care programs, we have Critical Necessities, we have Education for Brighter Futures, and then we do Environmental Necessities, where we're updating group homes for children. And you'll, most people don't realize orphanages, when the name changed to group homes, many people thought all children had foster families, but we have thousands of children right now that need to be adopted or have a foster family, and we've lost so many foster families because, you know, budget cuts, intense budget cuts, and we had wonderful families fostering children, and they could no longer afford to do it. Many children will return to their families, and so that's why we work so hard with the community. And we just had a really sweet day at Lake Forest High School. Every single high school student volunteered with us last Friday. They made candy boo hands for children that aren't allowed to trick-or-treat. That's a really important holiday for children. If you think about it, take yourself back in time when you put that costume on and you talked about to your friends who you were trick-or-treating with. Now picture the child that lived in a cage, or was lit on fire, or was rescued from a horrific crime, and they now live in a group home because too many people are afraid to foster them, right? And they need a lot of help. They need a lot of mental support. So we bring trick-or-treat to them. So tomorrow, we'll be at Ellendale, then next week, we'll be at three other different group homes, and the majority of kids that are decorating their cars and getting dressed up are from our community. So Lake Forest is really, we wouldn't be where we are today at Fill a Heart if it wasn't for all the Lake Forest-loving families. So you're never too young to volunteer, and we have so much fun. You'll see for Elvin right up there, that's a bunch of kids that dressed up and sang for trick-or-treating and decorated. We have little kids, you see the superhero, all these precious little children, preschoolers came in their superhero outfits and helped. And then you'll see a darling little girl by Fill a Heart's truck. She goes to Saint Mary's School, and all the children participated and helped. It was really special. And then, of course, our friends at the Chicago Bears invited our children, and they got to get autographs, and they had just a wonderful day. These are some of our programs. We have volunteer opportunities six days a week, and our most important programs right now that we need help with, Project Gobble Gobble, we have to make sure all children have enough food. And so right now, we have about a thousand children, a thousand requests from teachers for Thanksgiving food boxes. And many of these precious children, the parents don't have vehicles to pick up food. It might be too far for a pantry, or unfortunately, we have parents that have kind of checked out. And so how do we help them? We partner with teachers and social workers. I have to say something. I saw Lake Forest Police here. You guys have been amazing to our charity. We've had children that have run away to Fill a Heart in the middle of the night begging us for help because they're afraid to go back to their families. And recently, Lake Forest Police, they were so amazing when they came in, they were able to get the children calmed down, and if it wasn't for them, those two young ladies would have gone back to their families. Instead, they got to go back to their group home, and a whole trafficking ring was disassembled. I don't know if you were part of that, but it was, we're really grateful for that, and I just had to say thank you. So we have Project Boo this week and next week. We have Project Warm, which is really important. We sponsored already over two thousand children, who many are living in garages, they're unhoused, and they're cowchopping. We have a whole task force that we work with that goes into the woods, parks, abandoned buildings to make sure none of the children are living there. Then we go on to, we did Project Warm, Project Gobble Gobble. If anyone wants to sign up to help fill food bags, we always need more support. And then we go into Project Elf, and of course, those programs are really important. A lot of people sometimes ask us to do the Frosty the Snowman snowball wish list, or they ask us to do a Christmas tree wishlist at their companies, and sometimes they get so disappointed because it's very rare when our children ask for toys. They're always asking for necessities. And then we move on to Party for a Purpose. If you ever have a birthday that you'd like to celebrate at Fill a Heart, any way to get the word out is so important to us. So, so here we go. Here's Discover. They're very involved, Abbott, Abbey, so many wonderful companies. And then we have Saint Mary's Children. They packed a bunch of snack bags for an upcoming event, and then here we are delivering food to children. There we go. Oh, there's Ben Grum and his son. Everybody knows Ben. And then here's just a sample of a picture. We have Saint Mary's Kids, we're so proud of them, they just did the Domino Challenge, and I think they collected over five hundred boxes of cereal. So then, all the cereal goes into our food boxes, and it's distributed to children. So here's some more upcoming events. And then we move into spring break. Our doors are always open from ten on. We get calls all night long. So if you ever want to host an event with Fill a Heart to help children create brighter futures, we would be grateful. If you have a specific talent, or you'd like to invite our children to your company, we have life skills classes. It's so important to reach our children very young. And so I appreciate all the time you've given us. I know it's been a long day for you. And then I want to share something. Today, we, well, in August, we gave out more school supplies than we ever have. So you'll see the precious little girls, both of these little girls were rescued, and they're so adorable, and they were so happy. One of the little girls said she never had a backpack of new school supplies, and she said she wasn't going to dumpster diver looking garbage cans for little pencils anymore. So what we do is so important. In this year, we sponsored, just in the month of August alone, seventy-one thousand school supplies for foster facilities and schools. And then you'll see the little sign, it's a heart, that's from our Healing Art class. Oh, so the, I should say, the darling children to the left, they're from Waukegan, they're in our summer school program. And all of our summer school programs are all business incubator classes because we want to teach children about the mechanics of building things and marketing things and selling things, and it was so cute. One of the children's groups, they marketed so hard, and at the art show, not this year, but last year, they sold twenty-four hundred dollars' worth of jewelry. Then they had to go to Lake Forest Bank and save some, and then they had to invest some, and then they got to spend a little more. So, and their business now is still thriving, and their children are kindergarten through fifth grade. And then you'll see the little girls, this is our homework club, they live in a foster facility, and you see the cute little heart. That little girl wrote "Somebody helping me," and she put a little Band-Aid on her heart, and she had just been rescued, and she got out of the hospital, and now she's in a group home. So, and then if you look to the right, we have wonderful children coming in on Martin Luther King Day to volunteer, and on average, we have about two hundred people that volunteer on Martin Luther King Day. So here's Project Boo, and you'll see those cute little candy hands, and our high school students made over a thousand of them. So... And then we have our Project Warm program going on, we have our cooking classes, we teach children, you'll see the little boy in the very center, he learned how to make a solar oven, and that's especially important for children when they're homeless to be creative. I'm not saying he's homeless, by the way, but this little boy's in our learning program, and he's really wonderful. So this is just a little piece of what we do. Thank you so much for your time, and please come in and volunteer.
That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Well, that was impressive and somewhat heartbreaking. I would have to say that there's actually a need for all that. Anyway, the next item on the agenda is an opportunity for citizens to address the City Council. Is there anybody present who would like to address the Council? Feel free to come on up and state your name if you choose. Or not.
Just a very quick thank you to the city and everybody involved in the bluff project and the walkway. That event was just flawless, and so many people are using the walkway now. It's really nice, and I was just sharing some photos I took very early in the morning, how it's lit up, and it's absolutely beautiful. So if you get a chance to go down after the sun goes down, you really want to see how pretty it looks. So it's just wonderful, and again, everyone was just amazing, and I think people enjoyed it, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Certainly agree with that. It is an incredible project, and I think that with time, it's one of those things that's going to get more incredible as everything grows. Just amazing, and again, one of those unique things that Lake Forest does. All right, the next item on, oh, is there anybody else who would like to address the Council? The next item on the agenda is committee reports, and we will start with the Finance Committee. First item there will be the GFOA Triple Crown Award Presentation and Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, and this will be presented by Alderman Weber.
Thank you, Mayor Tac. Recently, the city was notified by the Government Finance Officers Association, that's GFOA as I will continue to refer it, and that the city's fiscal year twenty-three and Popular Annual Fiscal Report, PAFR, has received the GFOA's PAFR Award. The GFOA established the Popular Annual Financial Reporting Awards Program in nineteen ninety-one to encourage and assist state and local governments to extract information from their annual comprehensive financial report to produce high-quality popular annual financial reports specifically designed to be readily accessible and easily understandable to the general public and other interested parties without a background in public finance, and to recognize individual governments that are successful in achieving that goal. Successfully achieving this award puts the city in a very elusive exclusive club as GFOA's Triple Crown winner for the third year in a row. This designation is for governmental units that have been awarded the GFOA's certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting, the GFOA Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, and the GFOA PAFR Award. The city has earned the GFOA Financial Reporting Award forty-five consecutive years, the GFOA Budget Presentation Award for nine consecutive years, including recently being notified of receiving the award for the city's fiscal year twenty-five budget, and the cities have earned the GFOA PAFR Award for three consecutive years. According to the U.S. Census Bureau, there are more than ninety thousand units of government in the U.S. Only three hundred and fifty-four units of government in the U.S. currently holds the GFOA Triple Crown recognition. I'd like to give a round of applause to our finance. Thank you so much for your excellent work that you do each and every day that allows our city to be nationally recognized. We have a couple of our members here, Director Hall, Diane Hall, and, pardon me, I'm drawing a blank, Mark, and Jamie. Thank you so, so much. All of you have your hands into bringing this information forthcoming to our residents, and I, as your finance chair, is very, very grateful. Thank you. Secondly, we would like to acknowledge the receipt of the two thousand and twenty-four fiscal year treasures report, and can I have Jamie Scott please come up?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. The Finance Department is requesting acknowledgement and receipt of the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four annual treasures report. This
Item two, consideration of a request to waive the fidelity bond requirement in connection with holding three raffles in the city of Lake Forest for the School of St. Mary Parent Association. Approval by motion. Item three, approval of health insurance contracts for calendar year 2025. Item four, approve the contract to Camp Nagila Midwest Doing Business as Camp Henry Horner in the amount of $34,000. Item five, approval of a Public Works Committee recommendation to authorize the city manager to execute all required permanent easement acquisition documents for the Deerpath Streetscape Project to include the potential purchase of needed easements in an amount not to exceed $54,700. Item six, approval of a purchase of a replacement forestry section stump grinder in the amount of $105,316, and the trade-in of the current 2005 forestry section stump grinder as a surplus property in the amount of $7,500 to Alexander Equipment Company Incorporated. And finally, item seven, consideration of a recommendation from the Plan Commission in support of a plot of condominium for a building under construction at 1095 Calmscott Way. Approval by motion. Are there any items that council members would like removed or taken separately? No? Any comments on the items? Other than, it's amazing how much a stump grinder costs. All right. At this time, can I have a motion to approve the seven omnibus items as presented?
So moved.
Second.
This would be a roll call vote.
Alderman Walder?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Clemens?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Powers?
Aye.
Alderman Gashgarian?
Aye.
Alderman Levert?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Perfect. All right. There is neither old business nor new business this evening. The final item is items for discussion or comments by council members. Is there any? Alderman Notes?
Thank you, Mayor. Jason, since the wonderful ribbon cutting ceremony of the ramp the other weekend, I've been getting asked a lot of questions about dogs being able to be at the beach now that the season is over. I would appreciate the city making an official public statement on what our policy is for dogs at the beach.
Sure. Well, current policy does prohibit dogs, whether leashed or unleashed, at the beach. I would have to look into the code, but I presume that would include the boardwalk as well. We have received a few complaints about dogs on the boardwalk, whether they're going all the way down to the beach or not. That's the current policy as it exists. Ultimately, if the City Council wants to direct staff to revisit that policy, we can certainly do that. It is a controversial topic, and it comes up periodically, and there's strong opinions on both sides of the issue. If the council feels it warrants additional discussion, happy to provide some background and context for the council on how the current ordinance came to be, some of the challenges with potential revisions to the ordinance, but we'll kind of await your direction on that.
Thank you, Jason.
Any other comments, questions? Okay. Hearing none, may I then have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Fair and complete. Thank you very much.
I'm so sorry. That's hilarious. No, I'm good with it. I'm good with it.
All right. That was wonderful.[1607.13]